Meeting called to order, please. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Just to let the public know if they missed last week's meeting, we took a recess from the public hearing on the budget hearing last Monday. We are continuing from where we left off from last week. So we have a few more line items on the budget to vote on. Before we do that, let's do Madam Secretary, let's do a roll call.
Ms. Chune? Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Delay?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Seven present.
And again, to remind everybody, because this is a line-by-line item discussion on the budget item, we're going page by page, and we've got to discuss when the item comes up and take a vote on each one before we go to the next line item. Any questions or comments from any of the members before we start? Here none, we'll now go to page 16, the custodial and security services in the amount of $7,692,702. Ms. Bill Jotona?
So this page for facilities, the changes would be that it increased by $1.9 million. The increase includes raises, additional custodians, removing the $700,000 charge-off that we usually do to the revolving fund to allow for food service investments this year. We also added the safety coordinator back to the general fund, a security guard coverage increased, and the build and repair and maintenance increased by $100,000 to allow affordability during time of inflation for increased cost.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just want to check with the page, is the line item 2,400, is that? No, 4,000, I mean 4,000, as you can see, I need magnifying glass.
We're all going to get one of those.
4,000, okay, thank you.
I only have one more slide, it does have a few different pages, go ahead, sure.
Just to, because we need to wrap up this page first, sorry.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to double-check in, there are the ESAR funds that are reflected here for the district-wide HVAC investments, is that correct?
Yes, so one thing to clarify tonight is that anything we vote on tonight is just for the general fund line. The ESAR and the grant section is all informational, so that you could see a clear picture. I think I gave the example of if I didn't put all of it in there, you might see five social workers when there could be 45 more in ESAR or grants. But yes, there is $6.4 million in the ESAR section for facilities, but the amount that you would vote on tonight is general fund only.
No, I, yeah, thank you very much, I understand that, I just wanted to make clear on that, thank you.
Wonderful, since Ms. Turner isn't answering questions, not any more questions or comments before she continues? Here none, Ms. Turner?
Do you want to vote on this page?
Oh yes, okay, done with this, any other?
Are you able to speak on this?
Yes, yes. Please state your name and your address.
Sure, Michael Shan, 97 Forest Street, Lowell, chopped the chair for the custodians, slash, security guards. So I noticed, obviously, you can see the new building that's being built next door. Currently, we have 11 nighttime custodians. Back in 97, when we did that small addition, four positions, four positions was added, now since they're gone. We used to have 17 custodians over there at night. So my concern is...
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
My concern is that we're going to be investing lots of money with the new school, but only maintaining the same amount of employees that we have now. So I just want you to think about that, so. I know that, I talked to Ricky Underwood, mentioned something about looking to add four positions over there, I don't see that in here, so I don't know where that went, so that's my concern, thank you.
Sure, Mr. Superintendent, do you have any comments on that?
Sure, Ms. Turner, can you speak to what's in the budget, and if there's further questions from the committee, Dr. Hall is available for any further programmatic questions.
Sure. I'm trying to find the amount. They, just an FYI, they do choose based upon their need, the school picks, the custodians are part of the school site budgeting process, so they can choose to add more or less. Are we open, are we open in the school this year, is that what you're concerned about? Like, that you think we should add more this current year?
The new gym will come on.
Mike, would you please come to the microphone? I can hear you just fine, but I think the people at home cannot hear you.
Yeah, sure, the new gym will come on, I believe it's August, it was supposed to be in June, it's been kind of pushed, but it's in August. And I think the new field house is, I mean, square footage is probably well over $100,000, it's going to be massive in there. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're going to commit lots of money, that we have the proper, although we have the employees to actually clean it, you know, daily, so it looks new.
I do know that we added a couple of custodians, Ricky did, so that, and he was calling them floaters for now, so that, you know, they could assist with COVID and all, but I'm sure that if there's a need immediately in low or high, didn't have enough to cover what they ended up needing, they could use those positions. Schools are also allowed to use savings to reinvest if they do find the need, but this was definitely something determined by their school site councils, so we could bring it to the principal's attention to make sure that they're considering that when they met with their school site council?
Maybe it's something I can follow up with Ricky to, to follow up over at the high school, so, thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak, Mike, any other comments from the committee? Here none, I need a motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay for the bottom line figure Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Chune? Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you, we now go to page 17, employee benefits and retirements in the amount of Ms. Turner?
This page has the standard increase, we have to use an assumed 6% rate increase due to the rates not being released until later in the spring, so it includes a 6% rate increase and a small percentage for additional positions that may elect to take the insurance. So this is an increase of $2,000, $2.1 million.
Any comments or question?
Just comment, maybe question too, if you could recall, Ms. Turner? The longevity, I didn't know that we have longevity, but we do have $10,000 here, I don't know, do you remember what it's about?
Yes, I do know what it's for, it's for people that have been in this district for a long time, and many people ask the same question, which is, I thought we would be done with that by now, but we do have several, like I think 10 to 15, I could get the exact number of people that are still receiving longevity for a few years more.
That's great, good for them.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of $22,447,79 by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson. Sure, Ms. Mon?
Thank you, just a question on the retirement sick leave buyback, so we're anticipating basically the same from last year to this year, how does that track, I mean, we're obviously seeing a lot of retirements, is that kind of, do you think that's in line for what we're anticipating?
So, as you know, we do transfers throughout the year, and so I do feel, as though, sometimes I have to sit there and weigh something, like for instance, this year we're $300,000 short, we're looking at more like $1.4 million at this time, but being that we saw such a significant amount of retirees the last two years plus this year, when I look at the amount of teachers that are at the lowest step rate, we have a significantly higher portion of lower teacher steps right now, so I thought we would most likely start seeing a decrease on the sick leave buyback amount, not to be less than what we currently have, but less than the overage that we have been seeing. So I thought it would be worth the risk of leaving it the same, rather than cut in $300,000 in other areas, you know, so.
I mean, and obviously, it's a best guess, I mean, for something like that.
Oh, and as far as your question, as far as tracking, we do track throughout the year, so at any given point, if you want it, like even if you wanted the information monthly, we do maintain a log every month showing what our projected liability is, so that it, and then we watch the trend to see how many teachers seem to notify us at the beginning of the year versus at the end of the year, things like that, so we do have that information available at any given time.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chune?
Hi, I would like to ask a question about the student accident insurance, can you clarify a little bit on what it means, the coverage for that, is it insurance, I mean, cover vehicle accidents or any, you know, how incidents that's happening outside of the building and also inside the building, can you give me a little bit of?
So McCloskey, I believe it's McCloskey Insurance, and it does cover accidents that occurred during the school day, I'm not sure, I do, I cannot say that I know the exact policy here, but I do know at my previous job, which covers student accident insurance too, with the same vendor, that it does cover if there's an accident, school-based accident, like if you're driving in a vehicle with the teacher, going to, something like that, it does cover that type of event. I can confirm that we have that same coverage, but not only do we have student accident insurance, but we have the umbrella policy with the city as well.
And would that also include athletics, so a child falls down and hurt themselves during an athletic event as well?
Yes, just for the record, though, a lot of people may not even be aware of it, and the teachers actually forward out the, I mean, the teachers and principals forward out the documents to parents at the beginning of the year, but that is something that many people may not know about it, but yes, we do cover those type of accidents.
You all set, Ms. Chune? Any other comments or question? Here none, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin, I'm sorry, Ms. Chune?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to page 18, rental of buildings in the amount of $552,672. Ms. Turner?
So on this page, I've listed exactly what we had the last time, being that we are out to bid right now, we would not want to put anything out publicly and give people ideas on what we could go up to. Due to vacancy savings every year, if this amount does increase after we go out to bid, we could adjust accordingly through budget transfers. We did get two bids for the central office, currently, no one has submitted a bid for the 80-day school, I mean, for the special ed space yet. So at this time, hmm?
Other than the current?
I don't even, they, no one has submitted anything, and that was because of increased square footage, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Hall knows more about that, but I think the current bid is for an increased square footage spot, and no one has submitted a bid on that, so we may have to rebid with the current square footage, just so that we do have something.
Through Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Hall, do you have something to add to that, or?
Ms. Turner accurately represented what was going on there, good, thank you.
Any other, Mr. Lay?
Another quick question is, I see that food service offsets in that line, what's the purpose of having that and has no value?
Food service on what page?
On that same page, underneath the sped leasing space, there is a food service offset there, I don't know what's...
That must have been something from the past, but it's, yeah, I can delete that, that's something that was not funded since I've been here. I try to minimize food service offsets, so, but yeah, there's nothing, if you scroll over to the right, there's nothing under that. Yeah, but I will, thank you, I'll point, I'll fix that for the final version, though.
Here are no other comments or question, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of $552,672 by Ms. Chune, second by Ms. Doherty, roll call, please.
Ms. Chune? Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to page 19, capital outlay in the amount of $325,000. Ms. Turner?
Again, this page doesn't have any changes, other than I increased the budget by $100,000 to allow for miscellaneous cost or increased cost with all of the projects that we are doing, just so that we would be able to account for the inflationary costs, cost increases for all products.
Ms. Mon?
With the, with that, on that line that you're referring to, the equipment replacement, so what would fall into that? I'm guessing copiers, are there other?
No, not copiers, but thing, any type of equipment such as floor polish, you know, when they're cleaning the floors, lawn mowers, any snow blowers, things that, equipment that we use, we have someone here that probably can give you examples of all the machinery that, that's used by the custodial staff, but that would be the line that funds anything over $5,000, and again, the costs are increasing with everything, even in the office supply area, so when we had the extra funds, I thought we should make sure that we put it there, we could always use it for anything in that, in custodial, so.
Where does, where do the copiers land?
Cost, the copiers is under the 1,400 section, which is probably the fourth page of the budget book, and it's the same, and, but as we've mentioned previously, recently, I should say, we do currently have an issue that we're addressing legally, so if that were to, if it were to change, if we did end up having to go with a new vendor, the rate could possibly change, but what we were told is that they could save us money, when we've been researching other vendors, that they would be able to save us money in different ways, so leaving it level funded without just assuming an increase made sense to me at this time, being that we would go out to bid and get competitive cost, but it is on the...
That processes, the bid process for that is, I know, ongoing.
Right now, we have to go through the legal process, being that we have a contract in place, we would pursue a contract with a state vendor if so, if we did move on to another vendor, yes. So meaning that the amounts would be vetted by the state already, ensuring that we're getting a competitive rate, but again, it could change if we did change the number of copiers or anything like that, we don't know what the plan would be, so.
Would we be able to get a, and this doesn't have to happen today, but I'd be curious to see kind of what that list of acqui, of equipment replacements are. It seems like an area where we could be making investments now, you know, looking at the additional 100 from, from local funds, I think is, is great, but I mean, obviously with the ESAR funds, those are kind of one-time costs that, that, if we could get a sense of what it's being spent on, as we move forward, looking at the ESAR budget next, we can kind of keep that in mind.
The one, are you referring to the one, the 100,000, what we would invest the 100,000 in?
No, I'm still referring to, the capital improvements is stable at 100, but with the increase in equipment replacement, you know, I understand the thought of adding $100,000 in there, absolutely, but I do think that that, you know, those are, a lot of those are kind of one-time, or at least once every five years, every eight years kind of investments, that ESAR could be an appropriate use for, so I'm not recommending a change at this point, 100,000 here is fine, but as we move forward, you know, we're going to be looking at, at how to spend down those, those ESAR funds, and this is one area where it might be useful.
Well, that's a great idea, as far as having a running list, so that you know what we have invested in, because it will help us for future budgeting, but unfortunately, we would, that's what we mean when we say about the limitations of grant funding, that we cannot do certain things, and the only type of facility-type cost, it would have to be things that, well, I guess we could justify, like the floor cleaning machinery, because that's minimizing COVID germs, right, so I guess we could, but each item over $5,000 has to do a capital expense form with ESAR grant funding, and you would have to get justified and permission or approval to spend it, but I most certainly can leave, I'm bringing a running list of things that we purchase, these type of, you know, what we use these costs for.
Thank you.
Are you all set, Ms. Mon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes, through you, I just wanted to ask what the capital improvement money, what is that 100,000 for?
Capital improvement is supposed to be anything that's not a typical build and repair, that still falls under the school department thing, it's not even net school spending eligible, so it's for any cost, any long-term equipment type of cost that didn't fall under equipment replacement, so I'm trying to think of an example, that would be a capital improve, something that was build-in oriented that was not by the city.
So would it be whiteboards or things like that, no, that's instructional.
That would be instructional.
When we needed to get shades?
The shades?
Screens, I mean, that was a couple hundred thousand, I thought that was...
It was 180,000, we met about that today, and we definitely, Ricky Underwood was adamant that he, you know, that this is something that you guys felt strongly about, so we are moving ahead with that, we, he did get all his quotes, see, unfortunately, it's just like when we were referring to the STEM Academy and, you know, the space issues, there were so many limitations with vendors that could give us quotes, vendors weren't working or giving quotes or anything a year ago, so now they're back in session, he's, he was able to get some quotes on the shades, and it was 180,000, so we are proceeding with that, if it cannot occur, if it can occur beforehand, we'll do it with this year's funds, if not, we will not leave the funds on the table, we will spend them in other areas, and then use next year's money to do that, but that would be one of the areas, that's a perfect example.
I think it makes perfect sense, shades, screens, windows that open, that's going to immediately impact our HVAC situation this summer, when we're going to have all the kids in summer school, you've got to have air, you've got to be able to pull the shade down if the sun's coming in, so, but that kind of falls into this capital expense.
Absolutely, and again, we just met about that today, and he reminded me that we cannot let this fall through the cracks, so we do have a running list of things that were not just one of their items that they know needs to be done, but things that the school committee addressed personally, you know, like brought to our attention themselves, and shades were one of them, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of $325,000 by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Mon, roll call, please.
Ms. Chune?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to page 20, out of district tuition in the amount of $7,2199. Ms. Turner?
So this is the second to last page, I'm happy to say, this increase is $1.1 million, and again, here's another area where you have to weigh the, the risk. We could sit here and say, we have an assumption that we're going to have 10 more students join the district and, and increase by $2 million, but then what if we waste that, and it, what if we don't get that? So what we feel strongly about is that we'll do the 5% standard rate increases with the number of students that are in the district now, plus any students that are in the pipeline, less any students that are aging out, we come up with that amount and know that if we do indeed go over, if our, the student need base increased, we have circuit breaker revolving accounts that are very healthy, on top of that, we have the sped stabilization, so I believe we have $3.8 million in the circuit breaker account, plus 1.3 in the sped stabilization account, so if we did end up going over the amount that's listed on this page, we still, we would not be in a precarious situation at all, so I only increase by the 5% standard rate increase.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I realize it's difficult to predict this, but I think where we've seen... But I think where we've seen across the board, and I know we're not the only district that has seen mental health concerns increasing, behavior problems increasing. Um, I know the five percent is generally what the costs increase are. Have we not factored in for any additional students moving into out of district?
No, we did. That's what I meant when I said, um, every time, we've counted in students that we knew were aging out. So you might see some go down, and then a few go, but there are a couple in the pipeline coming back. So this is, um, so it's barely a change at all. We're not drastic with the increase because of sped, um, circuit breaker and the sped stabilization account. We're also invested in a, in an additional two or three CSA classrooms in district. So even if we have increased, increased needs in certain areas, they're probably going to stay in district rather than out of district if we can help it. Mm-hmm.
Ms. Turner?
Now, when you say, um, other districts, does that also include like charter school and, um, no, just?
No.
Out of district. Clarify a little bit on that for me.
Sure, of course. Charter schools and, um, regional school districts are listed separately in those, um, city budgets. What the out-of-district tuition account is for is special ed students whose needs cannot be met in district. There are collaboratives, um, where multiple school districts wa, um, work together to create a programs that can address certain needs of students if we can't, um, address them in district. But we do try to do, say for instance, autism, we do have our own, um, CSA classrooms and develop our, our own in-house programs. But for those students who cannot, if there is, we have examples like blind students. They may have to go to the Perkins School for the blind, things like that. Or medically fragile students who need, um, educational opportunities in hospitalized settings, things like that, but.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Mon?
Thank you, Ms. Amir. Um, just to reference back to, um, basically our current, our current year. So we've got three point eight million right now in the circuit breaker account. So should this go under or over, I guess, um, we can draw from the circuit breaker account to make up any deficit. The, the second account that we have, the one point three million, is the, um, what's the name of that one again?
Sped stabilization fund?
Stabilization. Now, this is the one that we've created, um, with the, basically with the, um, support of the, the city council that we're able to put additional funds into, basically to serve the same purpose as the circuit breaker. That there's an additional account that we could draw from if we, we had a deficit in this line item, correct?
Right.
Do we have, I, I believe that there's a limit on how much we can put in that account, is that?
Yes, that, the sped stabilization is the account that we plan on if we did find an un, um, a, a surplus that we're not aware of, we would add to that account this year. We'll add to it until we reach the two percent of net school spending. So I believe we're able to go up to three million dollars, so we have about one point eight million dollars of flexibility. And that's me just doing quick math. I do know it's two percent of net school spending. Um, so it may be a little off, but about three million dollars. And as far as the rules with the special ed circuit breaker, we're allowed to, when they determine how much I'm allowed to carry over, it's based upon whatever we spent this year, what we assume the reimbursement would be. So if our reimbursement jumps from three point eight to four point one, then I would be allowed to carry four point one million dollars over for next year. And I play it by ear, throw up until the very last day. I don't like leaving money on the table, so.
That is valid.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I also, you know, strongly support the idea of us, you know, building up the stabilization account as much as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, these are very different times, but when we created that, um, I think it was a, a more forward-thinking move to, uh, be able to make those investments when we have the opportunity to.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, just a follow-up, um, I have additional question about the circuit breaker and the stabilization accounts. Are those, um, only to be spent for special education services? Is that the requirement with spending?
Yes, but here's what, so circuit breaker, if you think of it, is al, almost like having our own savings account for, um, extraordinary cost. It's like the circuit breaker that you have at your house for electricity to stop the extraordinary cost, right? So you get seventy-five percent of anything over the foundation amount, I think it was last forty-five thousand six hundred. So if you have a student may, um, we're char, paying two hundred thousand for, anything over forty-five thousand six hundred would be reimbursed at seventy-five percent. They increased the, this account to include sped transportation, which is great, but they're doing it in increments of twenty-five percent, fifty, seventy-five, things like that. The good news is, even if we had another account that was in deficit, all we would do is say, well, we're going to charge, say if we had budgeted five million to hit circuit breaker. You know, when we build our out-of-district budget, we say, how much is going to hit general fund? How much is going to hit circuit breaker? If I had said, oh, we're going to charge four million to circuit breaker this year, and then we ended up finding ourselves short in another line, we could say, oh, we're going to charge, move five million to the circuit breaker line, which frees up local budget money, which then we, lets us move money in from circuit, um, out-of-district tuition to that account. So even though you can only use those particular revolving accounts for sped out-of-district, we could be more creative and charge more to those accounts, freeing up local budget to allow for other spending. Yeah.
Any other comments? Ms. Mon?
I don't think we could use the circuit breaker for it, but the other, the stabilization fund, is there any capacity within that? If we wanted to start a new program within the district and other, you know, where normally we would be sending students out of district, we want to instead keep them in district, create a new program? Could we use that money to invest in a new endeavor?
That's a great idea, and I can confirm it, but I do believe that you can, because when I read the language for the sped stabilization, it just said for any, it, the, the language is vague enough where it said for any special ed cost that was not originally budgeted for. So, um, so I can confer, I can confirm and see if we can invest in a program. But here's the thing, even if we didn't, if we spent our own special ed dollars on the new program, which meant we didn't have enough for the other, um, cost, we could use that for sped stabilization. So again, it's all, and when I say creative, I think sometimes that word's scary, but everything I, when I say creativity, I mean create, creative, and I get approval before we do anything. So I always research and ask questions and get, get it in writing from DESI first.
I mean, it would be a great opportunity for us in this next year to consider, you know, making that kind of an investment in a new specialty program, just because we know what the, what the costs are for, uh, out-of-district placements. They are, you know, they are, every year, they are amazing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, least restrictive environments mean that students stay in their own district. So I mean, that's a, an overwhelming, uh, mandate, that this could be an opportunity for us to expand, uh, the expertise within the district and the opportunities for students who have these kind of, um, special, special educational needs. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, hearing none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of seven million twelve thousand one hundred ninety-nine by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Doherty. Uh, roll call please.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
One of all, we're now going to the last page and the last item on the, uh, on the budget for, for vote, uh, this evening. Page twenty-one, suspense account in the amount of two million five hundred thousand. Ms. Turner?
So this pay, I mean, this amount is exactly what a, a few of you have referenced. Um, what if we have more special ed students that come in due to all of the, um, mental health issues that we've faced over the last couple of years? In addition to that, last, this current year alone, we saw a three hundred and fifty student increase in ELL, and since then, we've seen even more. So we know that the numbers are changing, and as, um, Ms. Desmond referenced the la, during the last meeting, we planned for a thirty percent increase for this come and fall with the, um, trends that we are watching, plus known groups of students that may enter the community. So we put the two point five million as other, um, as other districts do with the, with the consultants to allow for any unexpected enrollment increases, special ed increases, ELL student increases. So we think we're going to probably spend more of this in the ELL teacher area, um, due to all of the change in demographics. But, um, if not, even if this did not happen, if we did not see, um, significant enrollment changes, then we would obviously bring it to you for other endeavors or, um, other ideas throughout the school year. So one way or the other, we would bring it forward with other ideas, but we thought we needed to keep something set aside for all of the enrollment changes. And we put it under the suspense so that it's a school committee line item that we would need, you know, we need your approval for anything anyway, anything that moves between DESI function codes, but at least this way it was under the, um, school committee suspens.
Any comments or questions?
I, I do have a question.
Okay.
But I think it's going to be a stupid question, but I'd ask anyway. CD cash, didn't we say that the CD cash, is this, uh, a, s, the total CD cash is seventeen million? Is that, is that what it is?
The CD cash went down from seventeen million a couple of years ago to twelve million, twelve, um, so, no, it's more like twelve point three million. And that's part, if you looked at that final page in the budget, the two hundred and thirteen point seven million that you see under the general fund column, that actually includes your chapter seventy amount plus your CD cash.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or question? Hearing none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of two million five hundred thousand by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Turner. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Congratulations, that conclude the, uh, the budget hearing. Uh, we had twenty-one pages of, of twenty-one items to, uh, to vote on. Um, I think the, uh, the grand total is two hundred thirteen million seven hundred six thousand and seventy-two dollars. Uh, we will be taking a vote on the, the total bottom line, uh, at the Wednesday's meeting. And after that, we will present that to the city manager, um, to review and, 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 and look at. Um, if there are no, uh, other questions or, uh, comments, need a motion to adjourn by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor of the I, opposed, say no, the I's have it, the motion is carried. Congratulations. And, uh, great job, Mr. Superintendent, we're planning out the three days.
Jackie.
What'd you get? What did you, what time?
Were you going to ask a question?
Ah!
Oh, we could go back.
I was betting seven o'clock she got back.
Would, I can, what do you want, like a presentation? Cause we.